Do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
I move that the school board haven't been in closed session pursuant to a proper motion come out of closed session.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye, we are out of closed session. Do we have a certification of our closed session?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where as section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
We have a motion for certification, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye. Next up, motions from closed session, I believe we have two motions from closed. Do we have a motion in regards to personnel?
I move to approve the personnel agenda as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 I abstain.
Aye.
And aye. Motion carries. We have one other motion from closed session in regards to the superintendent's contract.
I make a motion to extend the superintendent's contract by approving a new superintendent's contract with Dr. Tamara Sterling for the period July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye, motion carries. Next up, pledge of allegiance. I believe we have a special young man coming down to lead us.
Madam Chair, Ms. Phillips, my Vice Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Hall Leonard, School Board members, Dr. Sterling, our leader, Mr. Tyvon Carr, Student Liaison, and T. Tonight, with great pleasure, I introduce this young man Kamari Hicks, who's in 7th grade over at JPK, and he will inform you, tell you about himself. We would also like to give mom a hand, Ms. Hobbs, for bringing him here. Yes, so next voice here is Mr. Kamari Hicks.
Hi, my name is Kamari Hicks, and I'm in 7th grade, but I'm taking 10th grade geometry, and can you please stand up for the pledge of allegiance? Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You can maybe see it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker, and thank you so much, Kamari, as well.
I'd like to say congratulations to the family, to the mom back there.
Next up on the agenda is the approval of our agenda, do we have a motion to approve our agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye. Agenda is approved. Roll call, Ms. Moore?
Andrea Shelton.
Present.
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 Present. Moving forward, next up is citizens time, Ms. Moore, do we have anyone signed up? We do not, so next up will be approval of minutes, we have two sets of minutes for approval, minutes from our September 12th work session, as well as minutes from our September 19th regular meeting. We'll take a minute to look at those, we'll take them one at a time, starting with those from the 12th of September. Ms. Moore, we do have one small correction on page 2. Oh, never mind, excuse me, never mind. Do we have a motion in regards to our minute meetings from September 12th, 2019?
I move to approve the minutes for the school board work session for September 12th, 2019.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 Abstain.
And aye. That motion carries. Next up is the minute meetings, meeting minutes from 9/19, if we could take a second to review those. Do we have a motion in regards to the September 19th minute meetings, meeting minutes?
I move to approve the minutes for the school board meeting for September 19th, 2019.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
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 And aye. That motion carries as well. Next up is the superintendent's report, I will turn it over to Dr. Sterling.
Alright, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Today, we're going to present our student liaison report first, and then good news, Ms. Moore, is that fine? Alright, well, we'll do good news, or we'll just do liaison? The student liaison of the month is Tyvon Carr. The student liaison of the month of October is Tyvon Carr, Tyvon is a senior at Franklin High School. He is currently ranked 10th in his class, maintaining a 3.45 GPA. Tyvon was a member of the 2019 Homecoming Court and is a member of the Franklin High School Student Government Association. He is also the star running back for Franklin High School's varsity football team and participates in other extracurricular activities such as soccer and basketball. Tyvon is a member of Franklin High School's National Honor Society, and after graduation, Tyvon plans to attend a four-year university and major in marine biology. Let's welcome him as our student liaison for the month of October. Yes, and now it's time for your report.
First things first, I'll say thank you to the council for having me today, it really is a pleasure and everything. What I'll be presenting today is all the events throughout all three schools, SP Morton, JP King, and Franklin High School. First is SP Morton Elementary School. For the month of October, the Boy Scouts of America visited SP Morton to speak with the young man. Bus evacuaries, excuse me, bus evacuation drills were successfully completed. SP Morton, its first family, excuse me, held its first family eat and read day in the cafeteria, participated in Franklin City Fall Festival. It also held its Homecoming Spirit Week activities. The staff completed professional development at Franklin High School, held family reading engagement night, pre-k held at Bright Start Engagement Night. Selected students will participate in a vision and hearing screening, cook, excuse me, cookie not spooky, family carnival will be 6:00 to 7:30 PM at SP Morton. SP Morton will have a family-style dining in the cafeteria. SP Morton staff will participate in Pinkout Day to support breast cancer awareness. SP Morton will have a gifted education parent meet and greet. Moving on to JP King. For the events of October at JP King Middle School, students took the PSAT yesterday at Franklin High School. Our second Parents' Partners was a great success. Plus 1 PE and arts, nine has 42 students this semester. Also JP King Students of the Month are Harmony Clyde, Madison Pape, Robert Doon, and Nathan Stouffer. Featuring JP King's Teacher of the Month, Dennis Sublin. 8th graders are scheduled to attend arts presentation tomorrow at 10:20 AM. At JP King Benchmarks are scheduled from October 23rd to November 1st. Health School Eye Market, sponsored by the Food Bank of Southeastern, excuse me, Virginia and the Eastern Shore, November 14th during our Parents' Partners. Moving on to Franklin High School. For the events of Franklin High School of month of October, we participated in African-American Festival. Franklin High School students and staff continue to work on safety drills. We also have participated in the voter registration day. Franklin High School participated in community meet and greets that were held at Dorchester Square Apartments, Berkeley Court, and Pretlow Guardians. Franklin High School's band participated in Peanut Festival held in Emporia. Our robotics and FHS team participated in Franklin Fall Festival. Our Vanguard students participated in TCC Virginia Placement Test Workshops. Students in SOLO classes completed their first benchmark. Enorme reports were distributed. In October 7th to 11th, Spirit Week, where we dress differently every day to represent the theme of that day has been held, which was last week. At the end of the week, Spirit Week, we participated in the pet rally for homecoming football game, which was that Friday. October, that same Friday, we defeated Brunswick High School 32 to 14. That next Saturday night, October 12th, we held our homecoming dance, which was well attended. Tomorrow, our varsity football team will be going for our third win as they travel to Sussex Central High School. The band and cheerleaders continue to provide support for our football team. Our girls varsity volleyball team has a 13 to 4 record while ranking third in the Tri-Virves District and ranking second in Region 1B. Cross-country is preparing for district and regional meets. Golf has completed their season and has shown much improvement. Students appreciated the hot breakfast in the cafeteria yesterday, thank you, Ms. Sterling.
Like that?
Yes, ma'am. All 10th graders and selected JP King students took their PSAT yesterday. And last, JRLTC has sponsored our first American Red Cross Blood Drive of the year, collecting 20 units of blood. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, a lot is going on in the schools and we appreciate you here being our Board Member of the Month, our student liaison. Next, we're going to go ahead on and move to our student attendance award and teacher attendance award. Dr. Branch will be doing that.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board, Dr. Sterling, our student liaison, thank you. We have great news about attendance in Franklin City Public Schools. Student attendance, at Franklin High School, JP King and SP Morton, Franklin High School, 96.7%. Joseph P. King, 98.5%. SP Morton, 96.6%, our students are showing up. And the staff is there to greet them. At Franklin High School, 96.9% staff attendance. At Joseph P. King, 89.5% attendance. And at SP Morton, 96.2% attendance. There were many, many, 100% teachers on the roster. Celebrate them all, thank you. Yes.
Well, with the Hammers fits an award.
This is my first time presenting this, it won't ever happen again, thank you. And the winner for student attendance, as I have read, with 98.5% for the month of September 2019, Joseph P. King Jr. Congratulations. And for staff attendance, in a very close race, but with 96.9% Franklin High School. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Next, we're going to move on to our report with curriculum and instruction, that is Ms. Percolter.
Good evening, School Board Chair, Vice Chair, School Board members, Dr. Sterling.
And colleagues.
I'd like to start by presenting the therapeutic intervention agreement, Dr. Sterling has reviewed it, and on behalf of her, I'm asking for your approval, first to forward it with her signature.
We did make the necessary corrections to this therapeutic intervention memorandum, and it was because JP King. Correct to FHS, so we will ask for the, Ms. Moore, can you give me the exact, so that when the board makes the motion, they'll know what you're saying? Right. Franklin. So with the correction to number three, it should say FHS High School, Franklin High School. Yes, in our actual hard copies, it's changed.
So, we need a motion to approve the MOU between therapeutic interventions and Franklin City Public Schools with the change to Article 1, Item 3, to reflect Franklin High School.
Yes, and this is for continued therapeutic intervention and mental health services for our students at all three schools.
Do we have a motion in regards to the MOU with therapeutic interventions?
I move to approve the therapeutic interventions agreement for 2019, 2020 with the said corrections.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to present to you, week before last, we extensively provided you an update on how we're working towards re-certifying the Bistro, so we just wanted to present that again, just to remind you that as part of Mr. Felts' goal, for his school improvement, goal number two, he's continuing to work towards that, and that's the evidence. Any questions? And then we also wanted to put before you again our school improvement goals by schools with a few of the action steps, just to remind you that we're continually working towards those and progress monitoring them weekly. Any questions? Thank you, at this time, I'll have Ms. Ricks come up and present the gifted plan updates.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Amy Phillips, Ms. Dr., I'm sorry, Dr. Hall, and also Dr. Sterling and all who are assembled. Again, I will be giving brief updates on our current gifted plan. On the Franklin City Public Schools has an approved five-year comprehensive plan for educating our gifted students. The plan must provide a specific explanation of our school division's implementation of the regulations governing education services for our gifted population. Our plan expires 2021, however, we have begun to process a revising the gifted plan. We met, our first working session was held October 3rd, and we specifically focused on Part 1 and 2 of our plan. Revisions were made in terms of our statement of philosophy and local operation definition for our gifted plan. Also, Part 2, which focused on our program goals and objectives. Those specific categories were the identification, delivery of services, curriculum of instruction, professional development, and also making sure that we have equal representation with our students. Parent communication and involvement, and focus, and the focus for each one of those components focused on the goal statement, objectives, activities, and also persons responsible and expected results. We looked at, we also in the identification category updated assessments, and I can honestly say that online, we will be implementing a screening assessment for our 2nd and our 6th graders this year, and those assessments will be administered online, so we did update our assessment practices with screening our students, so I'm very excited about that. Also, we updated several documents in terms of identifying diverse population of students based on research and based on current practices serving gifted students. We also are focusing on two new categories, the specific academic aptitude of math, especially looking at our population of students that are not just gifted or higher achievers, but looking at our exceptional students that are scoring very high in math and are part of those math classes. So we are looking at strategies in terms of bringing in the specific academic aptitude of math. Also, I'm excited about also exploring the gifted specific aptitude of visual arts. Meetings will be scheduled and arrangements have been set with the art teachers where we'd be meeting and discussing, looking at different, different plans and different strategies in terms of improving that, that area as well and bringing that to the table. So definitely, that meeting is in play as well. Our next working session will be held in November. The new plan will not be released until 2021, however, we are, as you can see, we're taking steps to make those necessary changes. Again, we're looking at all our forms and how we're revising our forms, and we also are using an electronic approach with our forms and even our processes and how we sit down as an identification committee in identifying those different students. The first parent information night, again, will be held Tuesday, October 29th, 2019, at SP Morton Elementary School at 5 o'clock PM. Also, I'm excited that our gifted advisory team has been approved, and letters will be going home soon to communicate to those members in the community, also to parents and staff who are part of that team. We will meet three times a year, we will meet at each school, and we are looking at a date in November to meet at elementary school, and then we will meet in February at the middle school, and then we will meet in May for our final meeting at the high school. And again, you will, we want parents, we want our community to have an overview and to be able to see what is going on with our gifted students, and they're, they're able to do presentations and things at each individual school, so we definitely improving, you know, our services and how we reach our gifted students. Any questions for me?
Welcome aboard.
Absolutely.
Welcome, Ms. Ricks.
Wonderful, so pleased.
Thank you.
Thank you. Get excited about the work that's happening in our gifted program. Next, we'll have a presentation by Mrs. Moonletter Edman with the Exceptional Education Department.
Good evening to everyone, Mrs. Phillips Board Chair, Dr. Hall Leonard, Vice Chair, School Board members, Dr. Sterling, and everyone here, good evening again. I'm coming to you this evening just to give you a brief update first of the professional development that the Exceptional Education Department has provided thus far this school year. So far, we have done professional development on the co-teaching model. We've also done differentiated instruction, accommodations modifications, the child study process, and for a brief update with that, we have completed SP Morton Elementary School. It is the goal of the Exceptional Education Department to make sure that all schools understand the process for child study, as well as functional behavior assessments and behavior intervention plans. We initially start off with providing the training to the administrators, including principals, instructional specialists, and school counselors, because the school counselors are the child study chair. From there, we meet with the entire faculty. Today, we completed SP Morton Elementary School with the help of Mr. Warren and Mrs. Thornton, thank you so very much. We're going to move on to the middle school and the high school, and hopefully have all of the schools completed by mid-November, so that we can make sure that that process runs smoothly and everyone is well informed on functional behavior assessments, behavior intervention plans, and child studies. Also, we have done the Saxon reading professional development for the new supplementary reading program that was purchased, and on Tuesday, October 22nd, we will be doing the professional development or the training for the Saxon Math supplementary program. Again, as you know, our students, we've made improvements, our exceptional students have made improvements, but we want to provide them additional support in that area of reading and math for our SOLO and to improve our students' performance. So that's just a brief update on our professional development that has been going on so far this school year. Now, the next thing I would like to talk about is our ribbon-cutting ceremony, again, I am very. Again, I am very, very happy, I'm very, very excited. Thank you all that attended, it was a very wonderful event. The children are so excited, they own that room. The children own the room, and it was so evident in everything that they were doing in the preparation for it. And I wanted to provide you a few pictures for those that were not able to attend of what the room, the transformation of that band room. The room was, had not been touched since the building was built, I do believe. And thank you to Dr. Sterling for her support. Thank you for Ms. Kindred, Mr. Custer, and everyone that came together to make this a reality, because it is now a reality, and we are going to prepare our students for post-secondary living. So these are some of the pictures, again, you see our kitchen and wash area state-of-the-line, state-of-the-line appliances. We have the business and technology center, we have the living room and the bedroom area. So these are the areas, that is the sensory room, and as you see, the kids love it already. They were already utilizing it during the event. The, we had the students present to the guests, because it's their room. They needed to own it, and they were excited, and they stuck together. When someone stumbled, another one stepped in to help, and it was absolutely wonderful. Xavier Branch, our young man, we call him Big X, because he's the tallest of everyone there. He was our greeter, he was wonderful when he gave his greeting in the morning, and there he is in the business center with Mr. Ryder. And again, what's next? Thank you, these are some of our guests, and they are saying our goodbyes, and thank yous for attending. We had Dr. Sterling, Mr. Felts, and I must say this, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut this short, because I'm getting excited. Mr. Felts, thank you so much. Thank you so much for your cooperation, your buy-in. Mr. Felts made sure that those children had those outfits. So I want to say so very much. And again, one more thing I'd like to mention, then I'm going to sit down, the floral arrangement. We made sure we sent out invitations to all of our community stakeholders, as well as members of the Virginia Department of Education, including Dr. Lane. But the flowers that are the centerpiece there came from Mrs. Mary Ann Moore. Mrs. Mary Ann Moore is the Director of Post-Secondary Education and Transition for the Virginia Department of Education, and she was not able to attend the event, but she wanted to let us know that she was there with us with spirit. So she did send those flowers, and I wanted them to be the centerpiece, so we're really excited. So, thank you all. I'm going to sit down now, because I can go on, so thank you very much.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you. It's a wonderful event, well-attended, and the work should be commended. Next, we're going to move on to our financial report. Unfortunately, our Director of Finance could not be with us at this time due to illness, but I'd like to present to you the PO that we are requesting be approved for our Google Expedition Virtual Reality Glasses. Before you is purchase order 20292 in the amount of $14,999. The equipment is to support the implementation of the STEM Smart Labs currently at SP Morton, grades K through 5.
Do we have a motion in regards to purchase order 20-292 to Best Buy?
I make a motion that we approve purchase order number 20-292 to Best Buy Education for $14,999.99 to purchase the Google Expedition XR Virtual Reality Kit for SP Morton students.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye, motion carries.
Excellent, thank you so much. Next, before you, we have the 2020-2021 Budget Calendar. I reviewed the calendar with our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Ryder, as well as Ms. Kindred. We looked at some of the dates, and the calendar was modified from the first time that we reviewed it as a team. At this time, we included Wednesday, October 23rd, as a pre-kickoff meeting with FCPS and City Finance Department teams. So our finance department, as well as the city finance department, will come together and just do an overview of the budget season. So that's going to be next week, actually, so we're looking forward to that meeting, and it's already been confirmed. Friday, October 25th, will be the actual budget kickoff meeting. Monday, November 4th, our school and department budget instructions will be dispersed. November 5th, 2019, budget survey release for public and staff input. Thursday, November 7th, 2019, school board work session, closed session at 6:00 PM, open session immediately following. And that will be dedicated to an overview also of our, the budget season and the process. Thursday, November 14th, school board meeting at 7:00. Monday, November 18th, 2019, fiscal year 2020-2021, budget requests are due back from the schools and departments. We will also release on Tuesday, November 19th, a budget survey closes. It will be released earlier next month, and it will close with that correction on November 19th. On Thursday, December 5th, this is tentative, a joint budget work session. This will be the first one with the city council. This is being proposed to the school board, as well as to the city council. So Ms. Moore will be polling the board, as well as communicating with Ms. Jarrett. I will be communicating with Ms. Jarrett, so we can have our first joint budget work session in the fall, instead of waiting all the way until the spring. Thursday, December 12th, 2019, again, we're just inserting these dates, we have a school board meeting. Friday, December 13th, the governor releases his executive budget document, and we know how important this is to the budget process, because he can make different types of mandates that may increase or decrease our budget. Thursday, January 9th, school board work session, presentation of the first draft of the budget. Presented in closed session, 6:00 PM, and open session immediately following. Thursday, February 6th, school board work session. Thursday, February 20th, school board meeting, public hearing on the budget. And this calendar will also be posted on our website. Thursday, February 20th, school board meeting, public hearing, again. Thursday, March 5th, school board work session. Monday, March 9th, this fiscal year 2020-2021, school board budget will be due to the city manager. Thursday, March 19th, 2020, school board meeting. Thursday, March 20th, joint work session. This would be the second budget work session between the school board and the city council. Thursday, April 2nd, school board work session. Thursday, April 23rd, school board meeting. Thursday, May 7th, school board work session. And finally, the projected date is Thursday, May 21st, 2020, school board adoption of the budget. So, this has been reviewed and revised from what we previously presented to you last year, because we wanted to include more work sessions with the city as we work collaboratively. So instead of one, we have two, and we have the dates in which we will be presenting it to the city, as well as the projected date for the overall adoption. It's a very detailed calendar this year. Are there any questions? Thank you so much for that. Next, we'll have our Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Mr. Jeff Ryder. He will present the nutrition, operations, and transportation budget.
Good evening, esteemed board members, superintendent, new liaison. Just to quickly review what we went over in the work session, we did go through the meal menus at all the schools. We've combined the middle school and the high school menus, so we have just one menu for both of them. We did, just this week, instituted the hot breakfast on Wednesday mornings that went over very big at the SP Morton and the other schools, they loved it a lot. And so we will have, we will continue to reevaluate the menus as the year goes on to continue to make them healthier as we come into the end of the year, calendar year. The cafeteria managers will implement Taco Tuesdays, I think it's beginning next week. And we do, we did strive when we redid the menus to make sure they have a hot and a cold choice. And then there was just some of the photos from the various schools that I took. There's the JP King Salad Bar. And there's the, there's the SP Morton kids. And so, so that was the menus. Next up is the operations of the building. So the, to review very quickly, we have the air conditioning units in all of our schools that have been there quite a while, but they are all, they all operate on a gas called R22 that has now been declared illegal by our government. And so, effective January 1st, nobody can sell it. And so, what we will have presented was a plan to begin to phase those out over time. It's kind of expensive, so we wanted to, you know, send it out over time. But because this is a closed-loop system, you know, unless there's a leak, you really don't have to replace the unit, but we don't want to get behind that, you know, maintenance problem in the future. So we will be looking to replace, at least at the elementary school, this coming summer. You have to do it, you know, in the summer, because you have to tear the ceilings apart and tear all the piping out and put the new units back in. So it's, it could be, it could be very disruptive during the school year, so that's why we want to push it into the summer. So SP Morton has 47 units that need to be replaced, and we recommend that they be replaced this coming summer. JP King has about 60 units, and those, you know, because those are a little bit newer, they can be replaced over time. And then at the Franklin High School, they have actually the smaller units all throughout the school, but they have four large units on the roof that we anticipate will be replaced in 2021, using the new R410 gas as a source. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource and Administrative Services, Dr. Branch.
Good evening again. You all were presented the VSBA policy updates from May 2019 to August 2019. There were 15 policies presented for review. Are you ready for the vote? And are there any questions?
First, I will take it, does anyone have any questions in regards to the policy updates that Dr. Branch presented at our work session that are before us? If not, do we have a motion in regards to the policy updates from VSBA for May through August 2019?
I move to approve the attached VSBA policy updates from May 2019 to August 2019 as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
And aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now give you updates on our human resources area as far as it relates to licensure. We have 86 total teachers in a licensure range in our school division. I will be presenting to you the overall numbers of licensure and the categories of licensure for the different groups. Out of our 86 teachers, 86% of them are, have some type of licensure. At Samuel P. Morton Elementary School, we have 63% of our staff, our teaching staff, as fully licensed. 13% are provisionally licensed. 5% to of our staff are, have extended provisional licenses, and we have seven long-term subs, which calculate for 90%. With those long-term subs, all of them are in some type of process or a step to become licensed. They were hired as long-term subs until they meet the minimum for the provisional licensure. Next up, Joseph P. King Junior Middle School. 71% of our teachers there are fully licensed. We have 10% who are provisionally licensed and four long-term subs. At the high school, Franklin High School, 81% of our teachers are fully licensed. 15% are provisionally licensed, and 4%, one teacher is a long-term sub. Are there any questions about those, that information?
No, but I really like it. I just want to say that.
It is good news, and it will get better.
I look at Ms. Moore, because she's, she guides me.
All right, thank you so much. We're going to move on to the community engagement, just for your review board members. We have the FHS 1920 Student Success Program. What's been completed thus far on October 17th, Community Service and Volunteerism, and you can read that. What's coming up next, November 1st, is the Customer Service and Conflict Resolution Series. They will, students at Franklin High School will give examples and role-play good customer service skills for work, school, interview, and life in general, and give examples and role-play conflict resolution skills for work, school, interview, and life in general. So each time we have a new module, I will update you with pictures and just some statements from the students and what they're getting out of this program. We're very excited to have it, and it is all community-driven, and I also know United Way is sponsoring some of the modules as well. So I need to go back and definitely put in who's the people, who are the individuals conducting these series. Next, you had Title I Parent Night, which was this week. I attended, and I did see a few of our board members there. It was at, it was a Title I Reading Night at SP Morton. Parent meeting in cafeteria, overview of keys to success. 21st Century Community Learning Centers. Reading in the Media Center with Bright Stars, first grade, computer lab, second grade, and fifth grade. I had the opportunity to read to Bright Stars in first grade, and they were so excited. My book title was, Are You My Monster? So the little boy drew a monster, and each page, there was a new monster, but he was a different color, he had, you know, he may have had nails, may have had a long tail. You could not put anything past a Bright Start child in first grade. They knew, that's not my monster, because that monster is brown, or that monster was red, and they were just calling out, and they were interactive, and their parents were excited about their, seeing their children excited about reading. So this night was absolutely wonderful to get a chance to work with our parents and our students. Blackwater Library attended, they provided book giveaways, and library card applications were available. As you can see, on the next page, you have Ms. Lauren Lee, who is the. As you can see on the next page, you have Ms. Lauren Lee, who is the coordinator of our Twenty-First Century Program after school at S. P. Morton. You had Mr. Dexter Warren, our principal, who was presenting as well as Terry, our community zerfler, our community engagement liaison was there as well. But these were the students. Mr. Warren actually read to the students. And then we have in the corner our vice chair, Dr. Andrea Hall Leonard, who attended. She is a social butterfly when it comes to reading because she hopped from table to table, and they were excited to meet her and work with her as well on coloring their names. Just look at our students with the with the teddy bears. I think that's Arthur, right? That's Arthur, right? It draws my memory. But so happy, so excited, and it was just a good, good evening. Next on the list is our Kooky Not So Spooky Fall Family Carnival. You may hear a reverse nine-one-one tonight reminding our parents. This is our first annual students and family trunk and treat. Students and families are encouraged to wear costumes, trick or treat while visiting decorated cars and play games in our carnival area. We are excited to announce that we have fifteen committed partners for our trunk and treat Kooky Not So Spooky. So they will definitely be loading up on candy tomorrow. So we're excited about that. Parks and Rec grand opening for the Armory Drive Sports Complex. We received that from Parks and Rec. As if you can attend, please do so. McDonald's Grand Opening, this is the reopening of our McDonald's on Armory Drive, which is a family fun event. We are excited to announce that our band will be playing for the McDonald's reopening. And McDonald's has also committed to provide Franklin High School, actually all three schools with a five hundred dollar one, five hundred dollar donation for all three schools to share. So we want to thank them publicly for that. Teachers in attendance will also receive a ten dollar McDonald's gift card, so they are definitely encouraged to attend. Next is presented to our school board is our G. Y. G. letter. Unfortunately, they will not be providing services, but we are also encouraging G. Y. G. to continue to work with us on a volunteer basis because we do so many activities and they provided so much so much support throughout the year that we still want to continue a partnership with them in a volunteer aspect. Next, we have our community survey. As you know, we're still working on our communications plan to update our website and internal communications and rebranding our school district. We had F. C. P. S. has distributed the the surveys at the Fall Festival, J. P. King Parents' Partner Meeting, S. P. Morton Reading Night and Fall Festival. And the end date for the survey is October thirty-first, and the survey also is on our website. And this is just a copy of the survey very quick. We wanted to continue with the board presenting you with our professional development log. So you have the professional development log from July until October. So we presented that for your review. Next month, it won't be as long because it will start, I'm going to do an overview for each month. And last but not least, we have F. C. P. S. field trip log from July until September twenty until September, excuse me, until September twenty nineteen. Apologize for that. And again, this will not be as long next month. Okay, that concludes the community engage my community engagement report. And I'd like to turn it back over to the chair. But again, board members, thank you so much for your support that you continue to provide our students, just showing up, smiling, working with them. It just makes a huge difference. Every single event that I've mentioned today, there has been a board member in attendance. And it just says a lot about your commitment to our students and our future students that attend Franklin City Public Schools. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I have one last thing. I have, please continue to send me recommendations because we are where we are with our breakfast because of a board member who brought that to my attention, and we brought it back to our students and our cafeteria managers. And each time you provide some form of recommendation or question or something that you're curious about, it goes a long way with the development of how we continue to work and provide services for our children. So again, continue to do the work that you're doing because all of these presentations are connected in some way or form to the vision of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sterling. Next up on our agenda is important dates to remember. I'm just going to hit on a couple of those. Tomorrow evening, Kooky Not So Spooky Carnival at S. P. Morton. And then Friday, the twenty-seventh, actually Saturday, the twenty-sixth, and Sunday, the twenty-seventh will be the haunted hallways at Franklin High School. This is a new venture for them.
New venture.
And I know that the theater department has been working very hard on this and is still looking for some volunteers if anybody feels like getting made up and looking a little spooky. We've got some committee meetings coming up as well. Friday, November first, because that will happen before we meet again, is the Parents' Lunch with Child with their Children Day at S. P. Morton. I did want to make sure that we hit on that. And then the following Thursday, we do have our work session, but that is also S. P. Morton Dairy Queen Night. So I just wanted to hit on that. Is there any other dates that board members need would like to make us aware of or the public aware of going on within the division?
I think we should just have our work session at Dairy Queen. Maybe takeout and support S. P. Morton.
And I probably will go and grab dinner on my way in. Usually I try to do that. Or a treat on the way home. If we get out early, we can all go get blizzards.
I'm just saying we can bring it all here. I tried S. P. Morton. I'm going to do it.
Next up behind that is business by board members. Does any board member have anything to share?
My son's home from fall break from college, and I'm excited. And he went to Franklin, so I just tied that all in.
I enjoyed the reading night on Tuesday.
And I just want to say welcome to you, Ms. Shelton. I don't know if I said that. I'm sure we officially welcomed you at the last meeting, but welcome. We're glad to have you. I'm sure you know that's a sentiment of everybody, have you as a part of our team. Welcome.
Yes.
I also want to say to Dr. Sterling, Dr. Sterling, as I listen to your staff tonight present, you have an amazing team. And I've noticed you kind of revamped, well, I guess I would use the word reorganized, restructured some things in the division. And for me personally, I like it. And I I like the fact that you are, because I think it was a concern of mine before, and I voiced that concern, that you would kind of let go a little bit. So I'll state that openly. And that I've noticed you have began to do that, and your staff is actually taking ownership under your leadership. So you're doing a wonderful job, an amazing job with your staff and all of the different programs, how they have been restructured, and everybody's able to come up and talk about the programs, which means they understand the programs, they own the programs. Thank you so much for that. Thank you.
And Dr. Sterling, I would like to say, thank you for changing the image of Franklin Public Schools. I haven't been here long, but prior to maybe a few months ago, the report wasn't beneficial. But now that I see with my own eyes, it is progressing and it is moving forward, and it will return. And I'm not going to say it will return to its latter glory. It will go beyond its former glory.
Thank you. And I think that it's positive to have the survey, the survey for the community to so that we are able, the school division is able to receive the feedback. Yes, that's a plus. But I'm going to tell you, then I'll I'll hush like Ms. Edson said tonight, that that the reading night at S. P. at Samuel P. Morton Elementary School was amazing. And I really want to give a shout out tonight to the community for the fathers. We had a lot of fathers.
I noticed that in the pictures. I didn't want to say that, but because I know that's politically correct, but I noticed that.
We have moms that show up all the time. But when we see dads at the table with their children coloring, cutting, engaging, talking, communicating, it was amazing to see. And I promised them that I would shout them out tonight and to let them know how much we appreciate the partnership with the family. And so I will try to provide pictures, Ms. Moore, because I did take a pic couple of pictures of the fathers with their children. So I will definitely make sure that I share some.
Yeah, well, that was something that struck me in those pictures, like it it jumped it was represented. It was well represented in those images that were in that slideshow. So, yeah, I think we've got great male representation, strong male leadership in our in our division, and I'm proud of that.
I only have a couple of things to add. One would be our training that we had looked at on our norms and protocols and hammering out that governance handbook. The dates that were proposed, we did not have any one date that had a hundred percent that were able to attend. It was about sixty percent on two days, and one date just did not fly. Would the board prefer that we propose some other dates to look at? And are there dates? I know a couple of people have conflicts with certain days or certain times. So would we propose looking at a different date, proposing different dates? Does the board have a suggestion of how they would prefer to proceed with that?
I do not have a suggestion.
Okay.
Are we on a timeframe? Are we within a working with a timeline?
There's not a a timeframe by which, like a deadline that it has to be done by. Since we've started that, we need to go ahead and finish it because it was not a good working document. There was a lot of outdated data in it. So of course, the sooner the better, but we are not on a deadline with that.
I would recommend that in our next work session, well, prior to the work session, if Mrs. if our board clerk could get with us, and then at the work session, we could discuss it.
Okay. All right. Next up, the May first date that was given out for board development training for V. S. B. A. V. S. B. A. has sent us an email to the division to confirm that date and is requiring a hundred percent attendance, and they're taking a little bit of a different stance this year. If we cancel, there may be a cancellation fee involved with canceling. So before I confirm back with them, I wanted to make sure that all board members were good with that May first date.
I believe Mrs. Moore sent an email to board members in reference to the date. I recall responding to an email, so I believe we've already received the email, whether or not we all responded, but we did receive it. She sent it to us.
And and yeah, and I have sent it out as well. So I just want to make sure that everyone is in agreement that we are good with the May one date. Okay. And last that I had for the public that may not have been aware, a former board member and former chairman of the board, Bill Scarborough, passed away a couple of weeks ago. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank him for his and his family because it's a family venture when you're on the board. I think we all know that, that sit on the board. It's not just us. Our families are are part of what we do because they sacrifice as well. But I wanted to thank him publicly for his service to our board and our city as well as to his family offer our condolences from the board. Yes, he was involved. Mr. Scarborough was involved in a lot within the community and made a huge impact within the community as well. Does anyone else have anything? Then the hour is nigh. Do we have a motion? We have a motion in a second. Would anyone like to discuss that? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Nays can stay. We are adjourned.